I'd like to call this meeting of the Riverside City Council for Thursday, May 17th. Work session in order. Now, call the row, please.
Ms. Campbell, here. Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Denny?
Here.
Mr. Fohlenkamp? Mr. Schach?
Here.
Mayor?
Here. And Mr. Fohlenkamp has asked to be excused. He will be late. He plans on being here by 6:30. And Mr. Smith has asked to be excused because he is in California for suburbs, I believe, meeting.
Said correct.
So, is there a motion to excuse, one or both?
Both.
Both.
Second.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Denny, seconded by Mr. Schach. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion's carried. Okay, we did get a new agenda. So, are there any corrections or additions to the new agenda? Hearing none, I undertake a motion for the revised agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Schach.
There's two resolutions. I wonder if we could put on hold until the next meeting. Let me get a picture. Boy, I have filled backwards today. Yeah, it was 12 R 1671. I would like to get that hold for the next meeting.
Are you asking that?
Yeah, I may, well, I'm going to put in a formal motion. On the agenda, I would like to have resolutions tabled at this time. It'll be 12 R 1671.
Seventy-one, yes, okay. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Schach, it's been seconded, is there a second? It's been seconded by Deputy Mayor Denny. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, well, hearing, hearing none, I guess we'll go ahead and have a vote on that then. Would you like for, well, go ahead, okay. There's been a motion on the floor, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
I vote no.
Call the row, please.
Ms. Campbell? Mr. Cole?
No.
Mr. Denny?
Yes.
Mr. Schach?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
No.
So, the motion fails.
So, it stays on the agenda.
It stays on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Deputy Mayor Denny, seconded by Mr. Schach to approve the agenda, the revised agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion's carried. We'll move into the work session items. First work session item, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I'd like to welcome Oakwood Council members Steve Wyngton from the First Tier Suburbs Consortium, who is here today to address council with respect to what the First Tier Consortium is working on as far as the agenda for the 2012 year.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Wyngton, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it. Welcome to Riverside.
Thank you very much.
Glad you're here, and we're being real interested in hearing what you've got to say.
I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Once again, my name is Steve Wyngton. I'm the Vice Mayor of the City of Oakwood. Very happy to be here tonight in Riverside, and actually, I'm very happy that you don't have a full house. The last two meetings that I've been to were at Huber Heights and at the City of Kettering. Both times that I went, they had very controversial issues that lasted three or four hours. So, hopefully, your session won't last that as long as those in that broken road streak of long meetings. As was mentioned, I'm the current Chairman of the First Suburbs Consortium of the City of Dayton, also a member of the National First Suburbs Consortium. Actually, Mr. Smith is at our summer conference currently. I wasn't able to attend because Oakwood has one of our big festivities this weekend, and I wasn't able to go. But for those of you who might not be familiar with the First Suburbs Consortium, we are a group of 14 municipalities and cities from around the region. I'll list them for you, just so you can see the breadth of the diversity we have. It's Clayton, Centerville, Jefferson Township, Harrison Township, Huber Heights, Kettering, Miami's Bird, Moraine, Oakwood, Riverside, Trotwood, Van Dalia, West Carrollton, and Washington Township. Our group is primarily made up of elected officials. We do have some appointed officials that act as members of our group as well. What our mission is, is to revitalize mature, developed communities and raise public and political awareness for the problems that are going on in our individual communities around the central core city of Dayton. I just wanted to go through just a few things of who we are, where we came from, what we're facing, and exactly where we're going in the future here. As I mentioned before, because we're a consortium of cities that ring Dayton, and actually, if you listen to some of the ones that I mentioned, Washington Township, Centerville, they don't really have a direct adjacency to Dayton, but we've found that a lot of the same issues that the first ring suburbs are facing are also being seen in the outer communities. So, we decided that the more the merrier, and the sharing of information is very important. One of the benefits of our coalition is that it allows members of each of the individual communities to sort of share things about their own individual communities, which some folks might not be aware of. It shows the commonality that we have in issues that are facing us, as well as allows us to exchange ideas how certain groups might be addressing things. Where we came from is originally, we were a subcommittee of the National League of Cities. They have a national organization, as I mentioned before, that I sit on, as well as Mr. Smith. We also have Representative Jan Vargo from Huber Heights and Barb Stacks from Trotwood, who sit on this national committee. In 2005, it was decided that the Dayton region itself probably needed a consortium that we could actually just specifically talk about the Dayton region. So, in 2005, the communities came together and we formed this group. One of the major accomplishments, I think, that our group has done is that we've developed a trust level between a lot of different communities. I think before then, there was always this sense of, you know, you have your own individual community, you have your own set of issues. There wasn't a lot of sharing of information and ideas, and I think we, by having a strong group of elected officials on our consortium, that we really started to develop trust levels between each other. Where we're, where we're going, as I mentioned before, we brought together a core group of respected leaders that have a diversity throughout the region. What we're trying to do now is develop a set of priorities of issues that need to be taken on. When we were first formed in 2004, the primary function was to get members together to discuss certain ideas, things that are going on, get guest speakers to come into our meetings and maybe talk about certain issues, whether it be urban sprawl, or regionalism, or those type of things. Most of those meetings ended up with a lot of information being conveyed, but there wasn't a lot of action items that were actually taken from that, from those meetings. I think we've gotten to the point now where we have such a trust level amongst all of our group that we really decided that it's time to start acting on some of the ideas and concepts that we have been talking about for all these years. Some of the major issues that we're looking at right now to come up with developable policies for are regionalism versus home rule. I think everybody's, has heard the phrase "regionalism." In my estimation, regionalism is sort of like the word world peace or bipartisanship. It's something everybody wants, but nobody really understands exactly what it means or exactly how do you achieve it. So, regionalism has sort of this complexity to it, but we also have the concept of home rule, which allows cities to sort of do what they need to do. So, how do those two things blend together? How do we work together as a region while maintaining our individual identities as cities? Also, the concept of urban sprawl is something that's been around for a long time. I think every community is dealing with it in its own ways. It's pretty evident, if you look at demographic material, that the Dayton region is not growing in population. It's been fairly stagnant, and in fact, in the last five or 10 years, we've actually seen this very small decrease in the population. And yet, if you look at the developable land, the land that has green space that has been turned into developed land, we've increased that by 40% over the last 20 years. So, it's one of these concepts where we're not getting a lot more people, but yet we're building further and further out, which taxes our resources in terms of infrastructure, money spent on roadwork, and those type of things. So, as a region, I think our group is looking to figure out, how do we maybe curb that, develop growth boundaries amongst communities to see if we can utilize the very small resources that we get from the state and use them better. Also, the concepts of redevelopment and assisting small businesses. I think that we all see a definite push by communities to try to bring in new businesses to the area. A lot of money is spent economic development-wise to draw in new businesses from outside of our region. One of the things I don't think is really addressed as much is the businesses that are already here, the ones that have been here for 20 to 30 years, that are going through tough economic times, and how do we help those businesses as well? It's great to have new people come in, it's great to bring in new businesses, but we can't forget about or neglect the businesses that have basically been, you know, our backbone for a long time. And then, just concepts of such as smart growth and urban growth boundaries, those type of things. Some of the accomplishments that we have made over the last couple of years is we've developed a video project that encourages people to understand that if your house is, you know, you live in a community that you really love, it has the characteristics that you like, but your house suddenly becomes too small. In the past, one of the thoughts has always been, well, let's just move out to a new development somewhere else, bigger, better, you know, further out. And we've developed this video series to encourage people to maybe fix up their houses and see what kind of things they can do in their own communities, thinking about staying in their own community first rather than moving elsewhere. Those videos have been on everything from kitchen remodeling to family room remodeling, bathrooms, exterior space, and then whole, whole house renovations. We've also been very active with the University of Dayton and their Fit Center for Public Policy. We work with the students every year in terms of developing some sort of project for them to work on that relates to first-tier suburbs. It gives them an opportunity to get some real-world experience, and it allows us to get some valuable research that helps us in our, in our efforts. Basically, that's, that's about my presentation. I just wanted to, as I mentioned before, I'm making a world-quint tour of all the individual communities. We've been in, in the area since 2004. We have representatives from all the communities, and hopefully, your, your members Mike, and Ed at one time was, was very involved, and Bill was our chairman last year. Hopefully, they brought information back to work sessions, but what I really decided to do was to try to go out to each individual community, raise the awareness of what we're trying to do, and encourage you, if you have any topics or specific things that you would like to see first tiers work on, to bring those to your, your individual representative so that they can bring them to our meetings. And at this point, I'll open it up for questions, if anybody has any.
Anyone have any questions for Steve Wyngton? I just want to say that we are, the next meeting, we will be having the three county commissioners coming, and it is in Moraine. So, I hope that folks from the council feel welcome to attend because it's going to be a very good meeting.
Yeah, one of the things that we, if you've been following things going on in the news right now, the county is developing, or has developed, a program called MCO Futures, Lake River County, Ohio Futures. It is an opportunity for people throughout the county to give input on where the county needs to go in the future in terms of shared services, everywhere from education to a lot of other different things. One of the things that we've been very interested in, the First Tier Suburbs Group, is exactly what that, what their goal is. I've been to a couple of the, well, I've been to both of the sessions that they have at this point, and they've been very informative in terms of the topics that they've talked about, but they've been sort of light on the, on the, exactly what they're trying to achieve. So, using a little pull that we have, we've got all three county commissioners to agree to come to speak at our, at our next meeting, and that's going to be an opportunity for us, the elected officials, to sort of grill them on exactly what it is that they're trying to achieve, ask them some specific questions about what they see their methodology being for the, for the future. And I encourage anybody who wants to attend.
So, we need them to define identifiable and measurable goals, not just vague, "We want it to be better."
Right, yeah. As I mentioned before, regionalism just tends to be, "Let's work together." Well, there's a lot of ways to work together, and so, we're really looking for specifics. We're looking for actionable items that they can tell us, you know, this is where we're going in the next two years, this is what we want to try to achieve in the next five years. I think that those are very realistic things for us to ask of our county officials.
But also, too, you've been making aware of that, to the county officials, that most of the cities in the, you know, surrounding Dayton area, the first tiers are working together, sharing resources. We're already doing it, but, you know, you and I have an idea of where they want to go, and that's not something that's all favorable to us cities as individuals, so.
As I mentioned before, the, the concept of regionalism versus home rule, I think they're going down a certain path, and I think that a lot of our individual communities are thinking that we need to understand exactly why they're going down that path, when, as we said before, a lot of the benefits that go along with regionalism are already being done, shared services, discussion amongst the communities, looking for every opportunity to come up with something that will decrease our costs while still maintaining the high level of service that we're, that we like to give to our citizens.
One of the other advantages of First Suburbs is, as Steve said, I was the chair for the last two years. Prior to that was Peggy Laner, who is Senator, now out Senator, and then the Mayor of Oakwood, Judy Cook, were the two previous people who were the chair. And so, Senator Laner has a really positive, had a really positive experience being on Kettering Council and being part of First Suburbs. She really is a good person to go to, and she's really fighting for what she can in Columbus at this point, and because she does understand what we, we are doing, and a lot of that understanding came because she was the chair of the First Suburbs and knew what was going on. So, I know she's, she's, she's working really hard for us, but it's, it's a tough climate right now. It's always good to have folks up there looking for us.
Yeah, the other thing I always end these meetings with is just an encouragement that, at one of our meetings a while back, I mentioned the fact that during the Oakwood City Council meetings and during our work sessions, we spend a small portion of our, each meeting, actually talking about issues that go on beyond our own borders. I think that's really important, that as a council, that you remember that, you know, your very first and foremost priority is your own constituents, but that we all, all are part of a bigger region, and that we really need to make sure that we discuss those issues, that if there's things that concern you, that you bring those up with your representative of the first tier so that we can take those on as well. We really have to raise all votes at the same time, and that's something that, I was surprised that some councils said that they don't do. And it's something that I'm trying to encourage more and more councils to do, just because I think it's important, not only for your own citizens, but everybody in the region.
It's tough, it's tough. That was one of the major criticisms I got from Councilmember Hankins from Trotwood, is, "Bill, there's, there's more than just Riverside." It is, it is hard sometimes because you do want to think about your own community and work hard for that. So, it's harder to think bigger, but it does teach you to do that.
It is a challenge, but.
It does, it teaches you to do that.
Just out of curiosity, has there been any discussion amongst the first tiers group, perhaps maybe at one of the MCO Future meetings, about perhaps maybe balancing that home rule aspect with the regional component on matters that are not judicial? And I'll give you an example. There is the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission there, which impacts all of the communities within the area. There is the Animal Resource Center, again, a benefit to all the communities. There is the library system, there is Metro Parks. All of those have their own umbrella of administration, and they have their own organizational setup. And, you know, the, the, the talk of regionalism is quick to say, "Well, if cities, you know, had a regional fire department, there'd be fewer chiefs and fewer battalion chiefs." And if cities had a regional police department, there'd be fewer chiefs and fewer deputy chiefs, and that would save costs. Sure. Would it not also be true that you could combine all of those organizations within a council of government? Sure. And knowing that those are all organizations that concern us, has that been an approach that first tiers has thought about in trying to address the regionalism component, is maybe looking at how to mold those organizations together in a council of government? Where we are currently, in most of those instances, we already have a voice on those boards, not in all, but in most, to be able to combine those together to bring about that regionalism, but yet protect home rule, at least in this stage of the issue? To be, to be completely blunt, I think one of the difficulties with some of the organizations that you mentioned is that they are, they are more, I hate to use the word rubber stamping, but, I mean, they're more organizations that sort of have a very set agenda. They don't really deviate much from the specific things that they're trying to achieve. And that's, that's not really not, that's just sort of a, a truth, that they, they focus on getting, you know, in the case of Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, they're focused on transportation issues. It would be good if that group could, and I serve on that group too, so I'm guilty as well, if they could pull back and say, "What is it that we need to, as this group, be doing and working with other folks?" Unfortunately, because of some of the financial issues that we're at in the state, is, you know, we're trying to solve the nuts and bolts of, you know, how to keep all of our roads up and running, our bridges, everything else, that it makes it difficult sometimes to do a lot of the planning that I think is very important. But it is something that our group is trying to push, encouraging groups to do. Also, you know, when we look at the MCO Futures, one of the things I have been disappointed with that particular group is that they, not necessarily intentionally, but they have circumvented the elected officials in that process. When they decided that they needed to look at a regional approach, it would have made sense to me that they would have said, "Okay, well, let's talk with all of the individual groups, or the, the parties who are actually going to be affected by it. Let's talk with the elected officials. Let's talk with all these planning organizations and various different services groups." That didn't take place. What they've done is directly gone to the citizens and say, "We're just going to open it up to everybody to do those things." That is one of, that's question number one that I have for them next week at our meeting, is why we have circumvented the elected officials and gone straight to the public. Because I think all of us have enough experience in the region to understand what kind of shared services are taking place right now, what opportunities are available. I can, I can guarantee you that, you know, my city manager has a whole checklist of ideas of things that he would like to see if, if it was possible, and I'm sure you're in the same boat. So, it's something that we just need to get in front of the right people and, and make our case.
But that would be an interesting meeting, to have all those folks in the room at the time. It might not be a bad idea.
Well, and the reason I'm guessing that it hasn't happened is that, you know, just think about your own group, you know, how many contentious issues have you had where you've only had, you know, this number of folks. Try getting a group together of, you know, if you look at every single municipality in the area, you're talking, you know, 60, 70 people in a room, all with their own individual, you know, ideas, their own areas that they need to protect. So, it can be very tough. Just serving on the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, I've seen that.
Well, there was a discussion at one of the First Suburbs meetings, national ones. We did talk about trying to get that Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission instead of having 78 people on the board, get it down to six or seven so we can really get something done. And that discussion was had, we really never moved forward on it, but it's awkward. It's very, very awkward trying to have an organization that has 78 people, I believe, you know, trying to make a decision. And, you know, if we could get it down to a reasonable amount of folks, I think it would not be a rubber stamping group as it is now.
One of the benefits of serving on the national committee is that we do get to, to share ideas with groups such as.
Yeah, there are some that happen.
Yeah, Portland, Minneapolis, you know, even communities like Louisville and Indianapolis that have, have implemented certain aspects of regionalism. The key that I always try to stress when, when I speak about it is that it is not some great panacea, and it's not something that is going to be able to just, you pull off the shelf and say, "Let's do exactly what Louisville did," or "Let's just do exactly what Indianapolis did." Regionalism works when it's done specifically for the constituents that are being served. And that means we have to get all of our groups together and identify the issues that are important to us and solve those. We can't rely on just some sort of plan that somebody else managed to pull off because it just doesn't work out. But it would be nice if it did, but that's just not the way it looks. It's going to be a lot of hard work. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Well, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, Johnson. Appreciate it very much, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Actually, I have another meeting at 7 o'clock, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Next on the agenda is a joint session meeting with Health and Safety Commissions and the Parks and Recreation Commission. Mr. Manager, anything you would like to say?
Mr. Mayor, just briefly for, for the record, if it could be noted that Councilmember Fohlenkamp arrived at 6:24 to the work session. That would be appreciated. With respect to the joint work session, this is an annual recurring event. This particular work session is with both the Health and Safety Commission, as well as with the Parks and Recreation Commission. I do see representatives here from both, so with that being said, sir, I will turn the floor back over to you.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Manager, and we'll start off with the Health and Safety Commission. And I see some good members there, so if the chair would like to step forward. Welcome, welcome, Dave. Welcome to all of you.
First off, Mr. Tim Snyder is our Chair, and he's a Fisher Business out of town, and the vice. My name's Dave Grant with the Record. I've got a couple of topics I'd like to address. First one is the dog parks, and you've already heard some of the pitches I've made on this at some of our social events, but we had our grand opening this year, and we had terrible weather, but even at that, we had about 15 dogs and about 20 people show up. We had a guest speaker, which was Jeff Schuman from the Beaverton Animal Hospital, who addressed the primary issues to do with feces and why it's so important to have your dog annually taken care of through your vet to make sure you have their shots and that they're well protected so that dogs pass on to other dogs, and dogs pass on to humans, and we do the same thing with dogs. So, he really gave a good pitch. In addition to that, he has promised me, and I reminded him again, that he was going to provide me with an article that we can put in a little. provide me with an article that we can put in a little newspaper and we can also do in our newsletter, our city newsletter, to cover some of the same things that he addressed before. Also, if we have another event later on this year at some time at the park, he has volunteered to come back and maybe reach a bigger group and give a very good presentation and he would take care of that for us. I have checked the park on occasions, my part as one individual, I have not seen feces anywhere in the park. Services may have another comment, I don't know, but I have not seen anything. Relationship with the people that use the park has been excellent in the evenings and on the weekend, the, the families or communities that residents that back up to the park have been very pleased with what we did with that piece of ground, we've all done volunteer work and it's being utilized and they're pleased with it and they have dogs that come up to the fence and would not even have them come over into the bark park and actually enjoy the company, they have the dogs just being there. Service department brought in some dirt and it was a recommendation was given to me, we had some gravel area and rock area and so a few holes here and there in those of that area, not being utilized formerly for anything before and so they brought dirt and filled all that in. I've spent a little time there just on my own lowering the chain fence on the gate because it was way too high for the dogs to get under and also the service entry closed the gap just a little bit by just, you know, adjusting things, so that was taken care of. I think that's the main thing on that. The other subject.
But can I, before we go, sir?
Sure.
It's just something I thought of as far as the bark park, one of the things that maybe you're missing is maybe a bench for people to sit and watch the dogs and I was wondering, I don't know what Health and Safety wants to do or if you could even, you know, have some kind of fundraiser and say maybe somebody could pay for a bench out there in memory of someone or, or something like that and, you know, just have, I don't know, have some benches out there for people to watch your dog.
In order for me to answer that question, I will let the man you have.
Has it been brought up?
That's a, that's an issue that has been discussed and keep in mind that when we sat down and talked about this idea, this was kind of a pilot project, so it has been done utilizing existing resources from the city's inventory. So right now there is a picnic bench that is within the fenced in area. Now, obviously, that's not something that we would want in there long term, but, you know, we didn't really want to invest the, the labor, the materials and the cost to, you know, permanently place some of these items and then find out that, that it was not a success and wind up having to correct that issue. So right now, this is kind of in the pilot phase, the test phase, so once we get through probably a season, maybe two, if it is still well used and is still well liked by, by the community, we'll begin making some more permanent adjustments, so that's where we would put in, we would put in the permanent bench, we might be able to extend water service and there's one section of the fence that's a little lower than the other, so those are things that we would, would upgrade at time, once we knew that the facility was being used appropriately and on a regular basis.
I definitely don't think the city would have to pay for a bench, I think that there would be, some folks, and I have a couple even in my own mind, that might be willing to donate enough money to have a bench as long as it matters.
The other, Stevens, the building construction crew might be able to build, I mean that's a fairly simple project that they could probably, possibly be, they might be interested in, in doing.
Good, very good, very good. I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that.
That's another area that we've already tried and it didn't work at the time.
But it could, it could.
That doesn't work, we tried that already.
So when you do decide to embark on that, let me, let us know, but I think they're very interested.
Well, as I, as I told our city manager that as we agreed upon in the beginning when we touched upon that this would be a national cost to the city and so far it's been, I did address exactly what you just brought up, that if money is an issue to build some things in there and if the bench isn't, sure, then I'd be more than willing to take that challenge and grab that money, so it's something we have to discuss.
I offered a ski mask too.
I'm sorry?
I offered a ski mask.
Oh.
To just finish up on that subject just a little bit, I, I do want to address it, that as I said, everybody I've talked to that uses the park is tickled, I've asked if you have pros and cons, tell them, everything has been positive, the only negative I have received could be common to the city parks in general is that those that follow the rule that use the park off leash, too many people are using community park off leash and that's the one complaint, so people come in being honest and somebody's attacking their dogs and there's been several incidents of that and I know they do the same thing with Shelly Park too, because I've been, they open a garden, so, and we're not supposed to do that, so I mean, that's the only negative that I heard as it relates to, you know, asking the question, are there any issues, but they've all been very positive. The only other item, and I'm just going to touch on it lightly and then I would ask you lady here or someone to expand on it, but starting off, well, let's just say our biggest event this year is going to be the bike rodeo, that kicks off this Saturday and that will be at Roar Park on the nineteenth from eleven AM to one PM and then our secondary event on the same heading will be on June the ninth from eleven to one at Beverly Gardens, elementary school. And I'll let you, if you'd like to come up and address all the particulars and details since this is a project that she has worked on.
Welcome, welcome. Howdy, you know, thing on the bark park before I start back on the rodeo, we need to have signs to direct them where to go to because if you don't know where community park is, you don't know where that bark park is, so anybody that lives in the area like you do or I do may not know exactly how to get there, so if we had a sign put up and better rules about keeping your dogs on a leash, might be the only two things I would have to address on that. The other one is, the rodeo is this weekend, all of you are more than welcome to come out and help in any way you can. We do order bike helmets, we do fit them with kids, we do donate bikes to the kids so that we can teach them how to ride safely, ride with their helmets on, we have the police over there that help us out, they run the kids through the course on how to ride their bikes, AAA helps us on that also, so they have all that there. We want our kids to be safe, we want them to be able to ride the streets and the sidewalks where they live at without any problems. So if you guys have any questions, any questions for Health and Safety?
So you need help cook hot oats or something?
Yes, I believe the mayor's willing to be our cook this year. Mr. Manager is picking up our food on Saturday?
Uh, I guess that is correct.
I ordered it already, thank you.
I will be there, but I have another meeting at eleven thirty.
Well, you can get it started up, we can put somebody else right in there.
I'll get there at ten or ten thirty and get them started.
Mr. Deputy can come out, he hasn't been to a rodeo yet, it'd be nice to see his face there.
Eleven to what?
Eleven to one.
And it is, it is a fun time, there's so many kids around, it's just, everybody's having a good time, so when's the second one, I'm sorry?
June nine, here, let's do it like this, I brought one for the council.
June nine?
Cal and probably Cal just one time.
Well, I'll do that, usually we give out any right around at five hundred helmets, between the both of them. We keep at Roar Park on this one because we seem to have a real big response over there. It seems to be an area, I'm not trying to put it down where the kids need helmets more from us than they do because they're not as affluent as some of the other areas. We've now gone to Beverly Gardens on the other one because some of the airmen don't make the money everybody seems to think they do and we want their kids just to say, so a lot of times if we pick the right weekend, the MPs will come over and also help us out there, so we do it over there also, but we're trying to get places where the kids are where we can get to them and we can actually speak to the parents to let them know that the importance of this. We've had parents come back to us and that, two years later, let them know they have another helmet because their child had been in an accident and the only thing that saved them from being hurt was they had the helmet on. So we want to incorporate this into what we're doing so that everybody knows what we're doing.
We need to collect those stories, that's amazing.
We're working on that now.
Good, good, because those are so important to, for people to hear those stories.
Well, I want the helmets back now when they do this because I would like to be able to display the helmet there saying this child is now alive because he had this helmet on and it saved him from having any serious head injuries so that people will realize because visual means are a lot more than, I mean, they make a bigger impact than just talking to them. You can talk to some people till you're blue in the face and they don't understand, but if they see that child's helmet there and it's all banged up or cracked or whatever and knowing that that was on a child's head, now that made an impact on them that talking through didn't do. So from here out, we're going to get the helmets back from them and that more than happy to give them blinkers for their bikes so that if you're riding and starting to get dust, turn them blinkers on so that the drivers see you in autos, so that you're not a target then. So, I mean, if you guys have any suggestions that you would like to do, please come out and see how the rodeos are run, volunteer to help and if you have some suggestions, we're more than happy to listen to them. You might see something that would improve that we didn't see and you might like what you see.
Thank you very, very much, we appreciate all your work and is there any questions from the audience that, for the Health and Safety Commission? Anybody have any thoughts?
Yes.
Who pays for what you're doing?
We do.
You do.
We do the.
Well, we have a budget that we do, but then, yeah, but then we also do donations, like Ponarosa donates a bike to us, so we have bikes to give away.
And the helmets.
BMW, you give us money on stuff like that and then the helmets come out of our budget and if we don't have enough on our budget, we see if we can't get somebody else that would donate to us also, so we try not to put too much of a strain on the city.
Right, and, and the helmets, you guys get them at a dirt cheap price from what I understand, do you have somebody who knows how to do that, Mary Kay?
Yeah.
Children's Medical Center?
Children's Medical Center used to give us fifty, they're now dropped down to twenty-five, but, and the ones they give us, all twenty-five of them are more like toddler helmets, so and, and a lot of them, it's a real big helmet, it helped to us because the people I go through is a nonprofit organization, so we're able to get them for like five to six dollars a helmet and you go in the stores where twenty, twenty-five dollars a piece, so I'm able to do it like that, but they don't have them small enough to fit toddlers, so that's why you have to be there, your child has to be there and they have to be fitted because like children, when they showed us how to do this and old fitting helmet is worse than having a helmet on, no helmet on at all.
They all tend to put it on the back of your head, you know, slip it back instead of square.
And then if you hit, you hit your forehead, you didn't do any good, so, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of things we tell them that, you know, you don't normally understand, little girls never should have ponytails on underneath their helmets because that's like having a big rock underneath your helmet and if you hit, it's shoving it right into your skull and it will crack your skull. You wouldn't think that, but it's a big mass under there that has nowhere to go. So we like to be, to be able to talk to the kids, talk to the parents, you can explain to them, this is what you need to do, if you're going to wear a ponytail, wear it at the base of the helmet so you don't have it underneath the helmet. When you tell them why you're doing this, then they understand. So, but the helmets that children's give us, they dropped it down to twenty-five. Now, I also found out that Beaver Creek does a bike rodeo, but they get the twenty-five helmets from children's also and that's the only thing they give away, is those twenty-five helmets, so the first twenty-five that fit is it, nobody else gets anything. So I like to rub it in that it's better to think.
Nice, that's good, that is good.
So after you instruct them, you hand them something, a handout to remind them what they've just been told that they can take home?
We talk to the parents and then the kids are supposed to sign up that they will wear their helmets and Ms. Reynolds, who's been a wonderful council member that before, has always come to the rodeo, she helps the kids, we bought stickers, I got them at a real good deal, like twenty-five thousand stickers for fifty bucks, but she helps them put stickers on their helmet, if you can decorate your helmet the way you like it, you know, you'll be more apt to wear it then, so we buy all the plain helmets, the kids put all the stickers on and then they'll wear their helmets out.
The reason I asked that question was, I mean, sometimes people forget.
Well, if we talk to the parents and we can express to the parents just how important it is that they wear the helmets, that they wear them properly and, you know, and once your child grows a little bit, you know, you can come back the following year or the year after that and get another one, because we used to do it in the fall and we realized through some of the feedback, doing it in the spring was better because then the kids could wear them all summer long, so we changed it up to do it that way. So we do, we, we appreciate feedback from the community because a lot of times they can tell us things that, you know, you're too close to see it.
Would it, would it be appropriate to put up a little sign that says if you've outgrown your helmet, would you guys be willing to take them back?
We were told no.
Why?
You don't know, A, they stress first it's a health issue, there's no way we can sanitize the helmets, so if this child had medical issues, we could pass it to the next one and their big thing was head lice. You know, if your child has head lice and you bring this helmet back because it doesn't fit him now and I give it to this one, now this kid's got it and he gives it to his whole family. That was the first thing they stressed. The second thing is, you don't know if they've taken good care of it, you don't know if the straps in it are, are, you know, sturdy enough, I don't want to try a helmet on a child, put it on him, find out the straps didn't work the first time he moved, it flew off and he had straps on, he had but no helmet. So we don't redo them, I mean, we'll take them back and dispose of them if that's what it takes, but we cannot retry helmets on them. The health issue was the first one and the safety was the second and that was by Children's Medical Center.
Helmets have to shelf life after a certain amount of time, they're no good.
You would think it'd be a long time, but.
But it's not.
Because you're looking at the attachments to the straps that are holding the helmet to your head and that you don't know if they, right, but then you don't know if it's been out in the rain a lot and now it's weakened the support system on it.
I see.
So, and I would never want to put something on a child's head that I didn't think was safe because if I found out later that that child had been in an accident, that helmet did him no good at all, I really would feel some responsibility for it.
So you discourage them from handing them down to younger kids?
Well, if you're handing them down to your kids, you're not going to give your child a helmet that isn't right.
If you don't know, I mean, but you may not know what's right.
But then if they come up and ask us that, at the, we do tell them and, and most people, if I tell you, because you have a lot of little kids, you know, don't pass them down unless you know that they're good, you're going to tell your friends the same thing, so.
We do this every year, so most, most likely they come and they get refitted for another helmet and they bring their younger brothers.
Since we're on both sides, we get both sides of Riverside.
About how many helmets did you give away last year?
We gave approximately five hundred helmets away last year, we're, we've been trying to keep good, better records of them because that's where we know how much we have to order. So I only needed to order an extra.
For those who have been, it's quite a event, I think.
Oh, it's an amazing event, it is.
It really is.
Yeah.
Where are you at?
Maybe I'm used to here.
Okay, very good, very good. All right, any other questions? Any questions for Health and Safety Commission on any other subjects? All right, seeing that, we will then move to the Parks and Recreation Committee and who?
Mr. McKenzie.
Oh, geez.
You are the lucky spokesman, thanks for by default. We didn't really have anything going on, but I'm willing to entertain any questions, so.
Mr. McKenzie, how long has you, you've, you've been on the mission?
Oh, not even a year yet, so.
Just a year yet, that's what I know.
About six months, I think it is, somewhere around there, so.
It's working out for you, okay?
Yeah, so far, yeah. I'm running out to go home.
I'm glad, glad you're enjoying it and we appreciate your work on it.
My dog does enjoy the bark park, so.
I'm sorry?
My dog does enjoy the bark park.
Good, oh, good.
So how do you handle the deer?
You guys didn't help clean up the park and everything, I know, I was there. Freaking idiot.
Sounds like the two commissions, they, I thought they would work together on the dog park, but now, sitting there just hearing that comment I heard in the audience.
It's different people that are on the commissions now than we brought you out.
Work together, be friends.
As much as you and I are. As much as you and I are.
That's not working.
It's not gonna work out either.
Mr. McKenzie, is there any projects you could talk about that's coming up?
I can address that and I can explain why the commission hasn't met nearly as frequently. You know, the Parks and Recreation Commission, they do have a budget, if you want to call it that. We do have a fund, excuse me, account 140 is our parks fund. Largely that is used by city staff to replace broken swings or slides, to put down fresh mulch every year in the play areas, those types of things. But there is about $50,000 that we budget every year for beautification. And in this instance, it has been earmarked for several years as a match to a grant, a VNR nature works grant related to the Glendee property over off of Glendee to North Cliff. In recent discussions with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, they have determined that typically when they would make an announcement, actually last month with respect to their nature works grant, they're actually holding off to make any announcement pending the halfway point of the bargaining budget. So they are not going to make an announcement until October. And subsequent discussions with the Parks and Recreation Commission late last year, first part of this year, one of the things that they had talked about was partnering with the Construction Trades Program over at Stevens High School. So several ideas were discussed at the Parks and Recreation Commission, one of them being some equipment and some items for the park park. Some of them were items that were covered or proposed to be covered under the ODNR grant for Glendee. And another suggestion was the rehabilitation of the picnic shelters. So in review of ODNR's delay on the announcement and in review and in consideration of the fact that the park park is in the test phase, if you will, that pilot phase, the Construction Trades Group has agreed to rehabilitate, at this point in time, the picnic shelter in the rural park. And I believe I provided to you in the manager's report. So we did just get confirmation of that, I believe it was last week. I have not had an opportunity to root the commission on that simply because they just haven't had an opportunity to meet yet. So the Construction Trade folks are in the process of partnering an estimate to do the necessary rehabilitations and improvements at the park. Once we have that information, that'll be an opportunity for the Parks and Recreation Commission to get back together. So I could tell you, it's not for lack of won, for lack of tried by these folks. It's just that their ability to, you know, make improvements or changes to the parks are limited because we financially are limited, so. So that is what the commission has been working on, albeit passively, but it is what it's been working on the last few months.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any questions from council for Mr. McKenzie?
Well, while they got me thinking about the dog park, you know, how they are over there on Parks and Recreation area, I think about pit bulls. Do we have anything on the books on pit bulls? Do they have to be insured and are safe? Okay, and they...
Actually, it's just a vicious dog.
Well, they just, can I say vicious dog?
We don't name, we don't name.
Oh, they just say vicious dog?
Because if it bites once, it doesn't make any difference what size it is. If it's reported, they are now declared a vicious dog.
That, okay, okay, but is there a list of vicious dogs?
No.
The state, the state...
You don't want to do that.
Not all dogs are vicious, no. Pit bulls are vicious.
Right, right, right. That's correct.
And what's, what's the number one dog that bites?
Small ones.
My shit's in it. Cocker spaniel.
I don't give a...
Cocker spaniels.
No, I don't give a...
So you can't necessarily count, it may not be as bad as a larger dog or more muscular dog. But they bite more often than any other dog, at least that's just...
If you're in the state, it's...
So you gotta be careful on how you, how you define vicious dogs.
Well, I thought they were like a long list.
You don't look at that.
There, yeah, there's a generic definition, which is basically any dog which is aggressive.
Right.
And then it also goes on to define the American pit bull terrier, any pit bull terrier mix. So I thought Stratford, Stratfordshire Bull Terrier and the American Stratfordshire Terrier are all specifically listed. But, so there are the two definitions. So those breeds are specifically listed, but then any dog which is aggressive or menacing.
Are those in our code or is that in the state code?
Yes, sir. That's in our code. That's our city.
State has revised that some drop.
Yeah, that may be something we need to look at.
That will come as part of the code five, right, as a code.
Good, good.
It's updated annually.
Okay, good. Very good.
Good, good question.
I saw Mr. Thompson came in from Parks and Rec. We were just on the Parks and Rec discussion. Is there anything you'd like to add, Mr. Thompson?
I'm just going.
I didn't get to put you on the spot.
No, you're fine. I was running a little late from work. Parks and Rec is working currently with the school district on trying to rehab some stuff within the parks. Hopefully getting some things done a lot cheaper than what it would cost if we actually contracted it out to an actual company. Looking at a couple of different things. One, building something down in Glendee or rehabbing, I believe, Michelle Burger.
They opted for Roar based on its condition. And so they're actually getting estimates on that right now. That was the brief, right before you walked in the door.
So everything's going good with the parks other than that. They're getting in full swing. We have football already getting ready to start out. So soccer going strong.
Football or softball?
Excuse me?
Football or softball?
Football's getting ready to start. Lineups are starting this weekend.
After not advertising our rodeo out in front.
Cause you had to put a sign up. You had to put your course in.
February.
Okay, okay.
You gotta have any reminding.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be good.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Appreciate you.
Could you be nice to me?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, is there anything else to be brought before the Parks and Rec? Anything from the audience of Parks and Rec that we discuss? Okay, seeing none then. Is there any other work session items to be brought before this council? Seeing none, we are in recess till 7:30. So please hang around and we'll be starting our meeting at 7:30. We're on recess. All right, I can call this meeting of the Riverside City Council to order, the business meeting for Thursday, May 17, 2012. And I'd ask the city major to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And before we go on, I would like to just say that I attended the Montgomery County Law Enforcement Memorial. And this was for all the officers that, in the Miami Valley, that were, had their last day of watch, starting in 1980. And on October 2, 1984, we had a Riverside Police Department's Larry...
Village.
It was the Village of Riverside. October 2, 1984. And it was Larry Safran.
Yes.
And he, his last day of watch was there. So I'd like to have a moment of silence in remembrance of Officer Safran. Thank you very much. Next thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for May 3, 2012. Is there a motion? It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Danning. Is there a second?
Say.
Then seconded by Mr. Shock. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favors, if I by saying aye? Aye, hold. Okay, there's none abstention. Please note the abstention. Is there any opposed? Same sign? Motion's carried. I will let, remind people that if anyone wants to discuss anything before council, they need to fill out a speaker registration form that's back in the back there. And if it's on agenda items, please mark so. If it's not, please mark that also. So please get them up either side of the dais. Next thing is city manager's report. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Included in your council package is my weekly report as well as monthly supplementals from staff. We're more than happy, is there any questions that you might have? I know that Mr. Murray also has an additional announcement to make as part of his report, so. Mr. Murray, I'll... Well, we did, we, what I'd like to say is we did, we were awarded the Safe Trust and School Grant.
Oh, good.
100%. Well, it's kind of non- infrastructure, right? So it's a 280, I'm infrastructure, 25,000 on the non- infrastructure. So we just got that late today.
Well, congratulations, congratulations. All right, are there any questions from the members of council? I just wanted to say, fires report, about 4.5 hours of overtime for the month of April. It's pretty darn good and all the overtime akin to all the fire. Thank you for keeping that at the level that it is. All of you seem to be doing a great job and appreciate your efforts on that.
Just for future reference, Mr. Mayor, we're being contracted, police department's being contracted to provide safety support to the Prop 35 project, improvement project. So next month, you'll notice there'll be a spike in the police department overtime. But that is all being paid for directly by the contractors. So while you will see that rise, the city is receiving compensation for that. So knowing your concern for overtime, but if that concern is a bug...
I do look at that every month, that's for sure, that's for sure. Good with all that. I saw the orange barrels out there, so I was wondering if that's what was getting going there. Glad to have that happening in our city. Any other comments or concerns for the manager from the manager's report? Hearing none. We'll move on to public comment on agenda items. I do have two people that asked to speak, but either one is on the agenda items. So if there are no, no one wants to speak on agenda items, we'll move into new business. New business, first order of business is ordinance number 12-0, no, I'm sorry, 12-0-490. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance is to establish the airway tip district as council obviously briefed at its last meeting and along the way to legislation from Mr. Murray's perspective. Mr. Murray and I would like to answer the questions before the required briefing.
All right, this is the first reading. So at this time, I entertain a motion for the first reading ordinance. Is there a motion? So it's been moved by Mr. Deputy Mayor Danning, seconded by Mr. Shock. The city requires that the first reading of the ordinance be read aloud in its entirety prior to council's vote to adoption. So Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance 12-0-490 decline improvements to certain parcels of real property located in City Riverside, Ohio to be of public purpose under Section 5709-40B of the Ohio Revised Code. Exempting such improvements from real property taxation, requiring the owners of such parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes and establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund, first reading. Whereas Sections 5709-40, 5709-42, and 5709-43 of the Ohio Revised Code authorize municipalities to utilize a financing technique commonly known as a tax improvement financing tip. Whereas the City Council of the City of Riverside, Ohio wishes to use the authority granted for certain such tips status in connection with certain improvements in the city in order to meet the public health, safety, welfare, and convenience needs of the area, including new development and traffic capacity. And whereas the council has determined to grant property tax exemption for the parcels compromising the City of Riverside airway tip. And whereas the boundary of the airway tip shall be co-extensive with the boundary of and shall include the parcels of real property specifically identified and depicted in Exhibit A attached here to. Whereas notice has been given to the Mad River Local School District of the consideration of an ordinance granting a tax increment property tax exemption as required by Section 5709.40 of the Ohio Revised Code. And now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Riverside, Montgomery County, State of Ohio, that Section 1 pursuant to Section 5709-40B of the Ohio Revised Code, this council hereby creates the airway tip, the boundaries of which shall be co-extensive with the boundaries of the parcels and shall include the parcels as specifically identified and depicted in Exhibit A attached here to, which parcels are located in the incorporated area of the city. Section 2. This council hereby finds and declares that certain public improvements in the city to where the planning, design, and construction of public street improvements, including pavements, walkways, bike paths, traffic control signage and devices, street lighting alterations to existing streets, including street skate improvements to Airway Road and Woodman Drive. The planning, design, and construction of utilities, including but not limited to water, sanitary sewers, gas mains, electric facilities, communication facilities, stormwater sewers, retention facilities, and fiber optic undergrowth. The preparation of plans for land use in the area, the creation or enhancement of buffer areas, parks, recreation facilities, and open areas necessary for ensuring the capability of adjacent land use. And the creation and/or enhancement of public service facilities and the purchase of property rights, right-of-way, and easements and other rights and property necessary for the completion of the public improvements listed above are necessary for the further development of the parcels of land identified and depicted in Exhibit A attached to this ordinance. For the creation of jobs, increasing property values, and the provision of adequate public service in the City of Riverside, the further development of the parcels in the airway tip area will place direct additional demand on public improvements. Section 7. That pursuant to Section 5709-40 of the Ohio Revised Code, further improvements to the parcels in the airway tip area occurring after the date of this ordinance are hereby declared to be of public purpose and are exempt from real property taxation commencing from each parcel with the first tax year that begins after the effective date of this ordinance and in which improvement resulting from the construction of a structure on that parcel first appears on the tax duplicate of real and public utility property and ends on the earlier, 10 years after such date or the date on which the city can no longer require service payments to be paid on improvement, all in accordance with the requirement of the tip status or the date on which the specific improvements are paid from the tax increment equivalent fund as defined in Section 6 here of, but in no case shall the improvements on each parcel be exempted from taxation for more than 10 years. It is hereby determined that a portion of the improvements shall be exempt from real property taxation. Such portions shall be 75% of the assessed value of the improvements and the public improvements directly benefit or once made will directly benefit the airway tip area. Section 4. That pursuant to Section 5709-42 of the Ohio Revised Code, the owner or owners of the improvements shall be required to make annual service payments in lieu of taxes to the Montgomery County Treasurer on or before the final dates for payment of the real property taxes. Such amounts should be charged and collected in the same manner and same amount as real state taxes. This council hereby expresses its intention and authorizes the city manager to enter into such agreements as may be necessary and appropriate to assure the payment of such service payments. Section 5. That pursuant to Section 5709-43 of the Ohio Revised Code, there is hereby established the City of Riverside Public Improvement Tax Increment Equivalent Fund into which service payments shall be deposited. Money in the tax increment equivalent fund shall be used to finance the public improvements and to make payments to the Mad River Local School District as council may authorize in the future. Section 6. That proper city officials are hereby authorized to do all things necessary and proper to carry out Sections 1 through 6 above, including but not limited to filing any required applications for tax exemption with the Montgomery County Auditor and/or State Commissioner. Section 7. That the clerk is hereby directed to forward a copy of this ordinance to the County Auditor of Montgomery County. Section pursuant to Section 5709-40 of the Ohio Revised Code, clerk hereby directed to deliver a copy of the ordinance to the Director of the Department of Development of the State of Ohio within 15 days after its passage, on or before March 31 of each year that exemption set forth here and remains in effect. The Finance Director or other authorized officer of the city shall appear and submit to the Director of the Department of Development of the State of Ohio the statute report requiring for Section 5709-40 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 9. That is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this ordinance were taken in open meetings of this council, that all deliberations of this council and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were taken in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121-22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 10. That this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest date allowed by law.
Thank you, E.V. Appreciate it very much. For those who don't know, E.B. just started with us about three weeks ago, and the clerk is on vacation, so she is filling in for her. Thank you very much for that. So, okay. So, is there any discussion from the members of council? Council members? Seeing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motions carry. Next ordinance is ordinance number 12-0491. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This council's treaties have been briefed in respect to the recreational products. This ordinance is authorized to purchase of 27th, 3rd, and 4th pipe.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And this is also a first reading. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion for the approval of the first reading of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schott, seconded by Deputy Mayor Danning. The city requires that the first reading of the ordinance be read aloud in its entirety prior to council's vote for adoption. So, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute sales agreement with the owner of the land located at 2713 Troy Pike in Dayton, Montgomery County, Ohio, in baying parcels R72-17002-0037 for the amount of $22,000 in the furtherance of the entracment recreational project. Whereas the City of Riverside wishes to pursue establishment of the...
I'm Trout.
I'm Trout recreational project located at 2707 Old Troy Pike in Riverside, Ohio. Whereas the establishment of a project requires the purchase of approximately .4000 acres partial listed above. Whereas the acquisition of said land by the City of Riverside would promote protection of Riverside's natural water and land resources. Whereas the acquisition of said land would provide public access to the Great Miami River and recreational opportunities for the public. Whereas the project will be funded in major part by certain funds granted from the Clean Ohio Conservation Fund of the State of Ohio, and the Clean Ohio Conservation Grant will be in the amount not less than $241,539. Whereas Miami Conservancy District will contribute a local match said fund in the amount not less than $35,000. Whereas Veteran Inc. will contribute a local match to said funds in the amount not less than $3,769. Whereas the City of Riverside pledges to provide no less than $6,761 worth of in-kind services in support of the project. Whereas the condition of receipt of said funds from the Clean Ohio Conservation Fund is to accept a deed restriction similar to that stated in Declaration of Restrictions, a copy which is attached here to as Exhibit A. Whereas the City of Riverside will contribute the rest of the local match funds through in-kind services of staff materials and service contractors and additional cash contributions, now therefore be ordained by the Council of City of Riverside, State of Ohio. Section 1. That the city manager is hereby authorized to enter into the purchase agreement attached here to as Exhibit B. Section 2. That the city manager is hereby authorized to accept a declaration of restrictions, a copy of which is here, is attached here to as Exhibit A, with the intention that such restrictions shall run with the land. Section 4. The council finds and determines that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this ordinance were adopted in open meetings of this council and that all deliberations of this council and any of its committees that resulted in those actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance by law.
Thank you, E.B. Are there any discussions from members of council? Seeing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motions carry. Next new business is ordinance number 12-0492. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to you counsel being previously briefed on the I-TROPE recreation project, this is authorized to purchase of property addressed at 2703 Old Troy Pike.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. This time I'll entertain a motion for approval of the first reading of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Danning, seconded by Mr. Schott. The city requires that the first reading of the ordinance be read aloud entirely prior to council's vote for adoption. So, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance in its entirety?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a sales agreement with the owner of the land located at 2703 Old Troy Pike in Riverside, Montgomery County, Ohio, in baying parcels I39-100505-0031 and R72-17002-0045, the City of Dayton, for the amount of $25,000 in furtherance of the...
I-TROPE.
I-TROPE recreational project. Whereas the City of Riverside risks to pursue establishment of the I-TROPE recreational project located at 2707 Old Troy Pike in Riverside, Ohio. Whereas establishment of the project requires the purchase of two parcels listed above. Whereas the acquisition of said land by the City of Riverside would promote protection of Riverside's natural water and land resources. Whereas the acquisition of said land would provide public access to the Great Miami River and recreational opportunities for the public. Whereas the project will be funded in major part by certain funds granted from the Clean Ohio Conservation Fund of the State of Ohio, and that the Clean Ohio Conservation Grant will be in the amount not less than $241,539. Whereas Miami Conservancy District will contribute a local match said in fund in amount not less than $35,000. Whereas Veteran will contribute a local match to said funds in amount not less than $3,769. Whereas the City of Riverside pledges to provide no less than $6,761 worth of in-kind services in support of the project. Whereas the condition of receipt of said funds from the Clean Ohio Conservation Fund is to accept a deed restriction similar to that stated in Declaration of Restrictions, a copy of which is attached here as Exhibit A. Whereas the City of Riverside will contribute the rest of the local match funds through in-kind services, staff materials, and service of contractors and additional cash contributions. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Riverside, State of Ohio. Section 1. That the city manager is hereby authorized to enter into the purchase agreement attached here to as Exhibit B. That the city manager is hereby authorized to accept a declaration of restrictions, a copy of which is attached here to as Exhibit A, with the intention that such restrictions shall run with the land. That the council finds and determines that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this ordinance were adopted in open meetings of this council, and that all deliberations of the council and any of its committees that resulted in those actions were in meetings open to the public can find the law.
Thank you, E.B. Is there any discussion from the members of council? Deputy Mayor Danning, is it 2707 or 2703? Because it said both in the ordinance.
The first is 13.
The first, located at 2703, and then down in the where... In the first whereas section, it says 2707.
Yep. The first is 13.
Okay. In the ordinance before that, it says 2713. So...
2707 is the I-TROPE building itself.
Okay. What's 2703?
2703 would be... 2703 would be Zinnell's property.
Okay. What's 2713?
So, what we're doing is buying the property, but we're...
Listing it.
We're listing it as the project is 2707.
Yeah. We just gave the address.
Okay.
That's exactly...
Okay. I'm good.
The second is the...
Interesting. What's 13?
13 is a house in the City of Dayton that we're buying in Centure Canal.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. I can't remember the gentleman's name. Yeah. But that gives us all the private property around that in nature. Yeah.
Okay. I just know we had problems with addresses before.
Yeah. No, it worked.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right. Is there any other discussion from members of council? Seeing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motions carry. Okay. Next resolution. Resolution number 12-R1688. Mr. Manager.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. This resolution is authorized the city enter into a contract with Arrow Marketing Pavement Marketing Specialists with respect to the 2012 pavement strike program.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And is there any discussion on the resolution?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Danning, seconded by Mr. Schott. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motions carry. And I just want to go back to the ordinances. I just thank you all for all the work that you've done. I know this has not been an easy project. And so, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for all the staff, especially Bob, for all your hard work on this. And it's going to be a great thing for our city, so. Okay. Next resolution is resolution number 12-R1669. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution is authorized the city enter into a contract with Puer Blacktop, who was the lowest bet responsible bidder for the 2012 million bill repair project.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Then moved by Deputy Mayor Danning, seconded by Mr. Schott. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? Motions carry. Next resolution is resolution number 12-R1671. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution is authorized the city enter into a contract with Puer Blacktop with respect to the water main break repair contract for 2012. So moved. Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Deputy... Mr. Schott, seconded by Deputy Mayor Danning. Is there any discussion on the motion?
This is 1670.
This is 1670. Okay. I said 71.
Okay.
Sorry. 1670. Yes. Yes. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? Motions carry. Okay. Next one is resolution number 1671. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to the request, the council's resolution is to authorize to direct a planning commission to evaluate a text amendment to Section 1181.15B of the Planning... Excuse me, Zone Code of the City of Riverside.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schott, seconded by Mr. Fulenkamp. Is there any discussion on the motion?
We'll call a row, please.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none? Call the row, please.
Ms. Campbell?
No.
I'm... My...
Yes. Oh, wait a minute. Not really. No. They...
It's whoever made the motions on the second.
No.
You, Ms. Campbell?
No.
Mr. Earp?
Yes.
Mr. Danning?
No.
Mr. Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
All right. Next one is resolution number 12-R1672. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution is authorized the city to enter into a contract with American Pavements, Inc. for the 2012 wrecking project.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Danning, seconded by Mr. Schott. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? Motions carry. Okay. Next one is resolution number 12-R1673. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution is to, excuse me, authorize the assessment of street lighting for the value of subdivision. So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schott, seconded by Deputy Mayor Danning. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motions carry. Okay. Next one is resolution number 12-R1674. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution is to authorize the purchase of a backhoe loader, a 420 EST Caterpillar, for a value not to exceed $70,000. So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schott, seconded by Deputy Mayor Danning. Is there any discussion on the motion?
We needed this for a while, right?
Um, yes. We have put as many Band-Aids on it as we can with the existing... The existing backups, so.
Good. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? Motions carry. Next resolution is resolution number 12-R1675. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution is authorized the city to enter into a contract with D&amp;M Excavator for the branch with Section 1 project. So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schott, seconded by Deputy Mayor Danning. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? Motions carry. And that concludes all the business part of our meeting for this evening. So, we will then move to public comment of non-agenda items. We do have two people that asked to speak on the non-agenda items. I ask you to please come to the podium, and please keep your comments to three minutes. First person is Ms. Sally McCarthy.
I'm Sally McCarthy. I live at 5222. I... Look, there is no left turn lane when you're going down Harshard and going to Eastwood Park. There's one left turn lane at the first entrance, but at the second one where the big water area is, there's no left turn lane. And it's really a bad situation because cars coming down there... What's the speed limit here? 45? Yeah. That's pretty bad. And sometimes there's a car that wants to turn left there. But possibly there's nothing the City of Riverside can even do about that. I don't even know who owns that strip.
I think that's a date, unfortunately. But we can pass this all your comments on.
It's an unsafe situation.
It is.
Okay. That's it.
No. There is... There's not a light at the Eastwood Lane.
No.
There is a light at Eastwood Park.
Yes.
But it's still...
Yeah. There's a left turn lane at Eastwood Park.
Oh, okay. That's right.
But there isn't one. It's a big lane.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Sally. The next person asked to speak is Edith Ann Mitchell. Ms. Mitchell, if you've come to the podium, keep your... Non-estheticians.
I'm Edith Ann Mitchell, and I live at 1125 May Apple Avenue. When we were... I was in high school. There was a professor or a teacher that I... I remember very well. I remember many of his lectures. And one of his lectures was on the assets of our future and what they would be. And his prediction was that water was going to be valued higher than gold in the future. You probably have not reached that point yet, but it is someday. You probably have not reached that point yet, but it, it someday, I, I believe he was correct, that water would be one of our most valuable assets. And in Riverside, we have liquid gold running underneath us, through our grounds, up in our basements, and raining down upon us. One of our problems, one of our biggest problems is that we do have a large source of underground water, and it does come up in springs in various areas. Those springs can change where they come depending on who's building where and what and when, and they have changed over the years. Various different neighbors have tried to come up with different solutions, especially women who are township, and these solutions may have helped them, but they created problems for others. And I think Miss Bryan, remember when a neighbor decided to fill in his ditch across the street from me, and, and everybody on my side of the road ended up with his mud and water and dirt. One neighbor had sludge in his driveway this hot. Of course, he was made to dig it out, but most of that ditch doesn't work anyway, but at least it helped someone. But like I said, our biggest problem with our water is that in the past, it's always been patchwork here and there, everybody having their own idea what to do, how to correct their problem. It's, it's a virtual patchwork. Well, we're not only a city of seven islands, we're a patchwork city, and we need to tie everything into a unified plan. And right now, the city does not have the resources or the money to solve all our problems. It's going to be expensive. The citizens are going to be the ones who will eventually pay for it in one form or the other, and in today's economy, they really don't have the money and don't want to pay for their taxes. But now would be a good time for us to plan for the future on how we're going to address this problem in a unified manner, that when we do something, it's not going to solve a problem for somebody and create a problem farther down the road, which is what has happened in the past, and mostly before we became a city. We've inherited a lot of problems from those years. In researching our water assets that we have, instead of letting the water manage us and becoming a liability, it would be wise on our part for us to manage our water and keep it as an asset, so that in the future, it can become our liquid gold. Want that?
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Thank you, and we, we will keep your comments in mind as we continue to move forward, and we are working on that as hard as we can, so thank you again, and thank you. I appreciate your comments. So, okay, next thing on the agenda, council member comments. Are there any council members that have any comments? Mr. Fohlenkamp?
I just want to recognize Mr. Joe Loy back there, being a, a good volunteer citizen doing something I think is very important. I would personally thank you, Joe. I know you're going to put a lot of work into this over the next years, but you, what you do is very positive, and thank you very much. Thank you all for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Fohlenkamp. Any other discussion from members of council? Mr. Denny?
I, I attended the Stevens Air Force Junior ROTC award ceremony, and one of the awards they gave was, they gave the city of Riverside a certificate of appreciation, so I want to pass that on to you.
Great, thank you.
And they also, we got a silver coin from, so, something for, and it was quite enjoyable to see, see the young folks get their awards, and we get a lot of recognition, and I don't like to be, we seem to appreciate that, and it was really good to be there. The other thing I want to remind everybody, we have flyers here for everybody. It's called Take a Pie for the Challenge, and, and so what we've done here is, the mayor, if we said, if, this is for Relay, Riverside Right Path Relay for Life. It's American Cancer Society's fundraiser. It's June 1st and 2nd.
Second and third.
Second and third, I'm sorry. Second and third. Better get it right. If we sell 500 luminaries at $10 apiece, the mayor will take a pie in the face. This is, these are whipped cream pies, so it's not going to be a terrible.
And he actually agreed that he would take more if people really excelled.
Yeah, he will take more if people really excel. Now, the city manager is also going to take a pie if the departments raise $200, or $200, the services department, if the service department raises at least $200, he will take a pie. If the, if the fire department raises at least $200, he will take a pie. If the administration staff raises $200, he will take a pie. Now, all those departments, also remember, also remember that if you take that $200 that you're raising to put a pie in the manager's face, and you buy luminaries with it, it will go towards, it will be mayor a pie. Okay, now, again, to the deputy chief, okay, we had a request from some folks, and the deputy chief, we talked to the deputy chief about taking a pie. Deputy chief has agreed that if the police department raises $1,000, he will take a pie. Okay? This was it, this was, and.
He has the gun.
He has a gun, and, and the folks said that they're not going to allow it. In addition to that, for every $200 that they raised, on top of that, he will take an additional pie. So, okay, so, and if they take that, let's say $1,200 or $1,800, or $2,500, and they buy luminaries with it, the mayor will be taking a pie. So, and the city manager has also said, if, if the deputy chief takes a pie, he'll take an additional pie. So, there are challenges for pies in the face. Are we doing those at closing ceremonies?
We're probably doing Saturday night because closing ceremonies are so early.
Okay, so we'll be doing those Saturday evening, so come out to Relay for Life and, and help us put pies in folks' faces.
This won't be reflected in our appraisals, will it?
With blindfolded.
Make your promises.
Of course. Of course not, and if, if they, if it does, I think we have the folks here that can make it show up in his appraisal. Something about not playing well with others. So, if anybody wants a flyer and would like to donate to that, is there.
How many pies would he have to get the other favorable appraisal?
I'm sure it'd be anything. And, and here's the, here's the form to, if you want to, if you want to get luminaries. Also, there, there's a, uh, trifles here on exactly what Relay for Life is, and one of the things that, besides funding, um, research for cancer, they also do, why don't you explain this, Julie? It's easier for you, because you give me like two seconds.
Would you want to move to the podium, please? This is Julie Denny.
Yes, I am Julie Denny, and I'm chairman of the Relay for Life for the Riverside Right Path area. And the cards that the deputy mayor is talking about, it's one of the other services that American Cancer Society provides for cancer patients, caregivers, survivors. It's an 800 number that's good for around the world. So anyone who has been diagnosed with cancer, who has a family member and they're trying to figure out how to get services or where to go, they can call this one number to the American Cancer Society, and they will hook them up with organizations and places as close to where they live as possible. What this also does, if a cancer patient needs a ride to treatment, we have volunteers that will come and take them to their treatments, because it's a lot for a caregiver sometimes. Those treatments can be every day, so it's kind of a little bit of respite care without respite care, you might say, but it's a way to give the caregivers a chance. It's also a way for them to find out what's available around my area, or where's the nearest treatment center? Where can I go? What's going on? And that's just one of the other many, many things that the dollars raised through Relay pays for. And if anyone is interested in being part of a cancer study, they actually are doing their CP3, where they just take a little bit of blood, you fill out a survey, and you have to be between the ages of, I think, 25 and 60, I think it is, they'll quote me on that, and every couple of years you'll get a survey, and they, they want to know about, you know, your eating habits, your weight, if you've come down with any illnesses, things of that, because what they've learned is, this is how they've learned how certain cancers and what are some of the things to look for, and they've learned about a lot of other cancers and finding treatments and better ways of helping people through their recovery, and that's the reason we're celebrating more birthdays. If you didn't know, there's also a new chemotherapy drug that American Cancer Society is really working hard on, which helps where your dollars go, and it's a chemotherapy drug that is taken orally with less side effects. Now we have to work on our legislature to make sure that our healthcare companies are allowing it, because they can do it at home, you know, and with a lot less side effects, or even finding that less people are losing hair with this drug, and that's one of the big things. I could go on, but that's kind of just, there's a lot of other things come out to Relay. We will have booths set up with all the other, you know, feel great, look great for cancer patients and everything. There's a lot going on, and the money is really needed so that no one else has to hear those words, "You have cancer."
Thank you. I apologize for my. This is near and dear to my heart, and I thought it was, it's one of those things that I, I really appreciate council and everybody participating, and it's, it's one of these, this is one of those projects that I believe can bring, make this city into a community and bring our community together, because I think it's going to bring everybody together for, for, for a, a real, a main cause, and I think it's a very positive thing for us and, and the city of Riverside, and it teams us with the Right Path, which is a good thing. So I think all those things are very positive. I want to thank staff for everything they do for us. Bob, congratulations on the, on, I know all the work that you did to get the Safe Route to school, and I think that's a very positive thing, that the city is working with the Board of Education, and we're doing, we're doing this project together, and it's another community as a whole project, so, and, and the Eintrau, it's, everything's coming together, so I really appreciate everything everybody does. Thank you, Ms. Denny.
Anyone else on council have any comments? All right, I just have a few things. Again, the bike rodeo is coming up this weekend, May 19th, 2012, 11 to 1 at Roar Park, so please be aware of that. Have the Air Force magazine that I get every month, so if anyone's interested in that, please look that over. I got the report from Vectren. This is their foundation report. As you heard earlier, Vectren did donate some money to us. What was the number again?
About $4,000.
$4,000, so for our canoe thing at the Eintrau. So, here's a report from them. Also got the, uh, membership for the National League of Cities, so we are now officially members of the National League of Cities for another year, and that's been good for us as we continue to work with many of the projects there. I did 10 weddings this last two weeks, and they're really, they're really coming in fast and furious, so that's a, that's a good thing, too. Thanks, thanks. Also want to say that we had the unsung hero aboard breakfast. As many of you have heard me talk in the past, the unsung hero is a person who has Appalachian roots and have worked quietly in the neighborhood and Ms. Campbell, in the community. Ms. Campbell was an unsung hero a few years ago. Mr. Chakasi was an unsung hero a few years ago, and our, our old mayor Johnny Dome was an unsung hero, and so we had another Riverside resident added to that, and her name is Sissy Long. Brenda Long, if any of you know Ms. Long, she is now president of the festival committee. She's just been active in our community, very active, and she was recognized by the Appalachian Board as an unsung hero. So we keep getting the good, good things out of good people from Riverside, and I know that Mr. Smith and Ms. Campbell and Mr. Shock all helped in getting that nomination to, to the unsung hero awards, and it was greatly appreciated. Also went to luncheon for the water, groundwater protection, and had a luncheon at the UD, at UD campus, and it was a children's waterfall festival, and we were, again, recognized as a groundwater guardian. We, we are protecting of the groundwater, and there's a lot of reasons for that, many of them just simply that we have the ordinances and codes in place to protect our groundwater, because it does, believe it or not, all the water from that, that gives us to Dayton and a lot of the surrounding areas comes from what was Riverside and, or in, in the middle of Riverside. So we are the protectors of the groundwater, and we were recognized for that, so.
And just a little side note, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Shock.
This is the third, third largest archipelar in the United States.
And Vladi Dola, it's right off of Harshman Road, you're just down the road a little bit, is, is where all the wells are, so it's right, right, right here. So, okay, is there anything else to be brought before council? So is there a need for executive session, Mr. Manager?
I guess there's about five minutes.
Okay, so we do need a need for executive session for personnel, so is there a motion to go in executive session?
I have a motion to go in executive session for personnel.
Okay, it's been moved by Deputy Mayor Denny, second by.
Second.
Ms. Campbell?
Campbell's.
And we need to call the row on that. Call the row, please.
Mr. Denny?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Herb?
Yes.
Mr. Fohlenkamp?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Max?
Yes. Motion carried, so again, thank you all very, very much for coming. We appreciate you being here, appreciate all you do in the community, and have a good Memorial Day.